Okay, at six thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. And this is the August seventeenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the Committee of the Whole, Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities. And we're at number two on the list, and I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
So.
Do I have a mover? Do I have a seconder? Uh, Deputy Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, number three is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof.
None by me.
I'm hearing none, thank you. Now, business arising from the previous Committee of the Whole minutes, if any?
I have a couple.
I'll start with Councilor Dillabon.
Mr. Chair, thanks. Um, it's three of five, I can only guess, three of fifty-three, sorry. Halfway down where we had a discussion on ice rental time. I'd just like to know, Mr. Spencer, we had our first weekend, how did it go? Through the chair. Through the chair, Mr. Spencer.
Uh, through the chair, the Councilor Dillabon. Uh, first weekend went well. Um, rentals on Saturday and Sunday. I was there all day Saturday to, uh, check in and see how things were going. Uh, the policies and procedures that we have in place, uh, all the associations seem to have adapted to what we are looking for. And, um, there was no real, uh, major issues at all, to be quite honest with you.
Good. I was there today, driving by, and I seen some of them getting dressed outside there in between their, opening up their car doors and so on, you know?
Yes, for the first, uh, at least for the first two weeks, they have to come dressed.
Yeah.
The only thing they have, they can put on in the change room are their skates. And we'll address that after the first two weeks, um, once school goes back.
So all in all, went pretty good then?
Uh, yeah.
First time around?
Yes.
No one knows what to expect, so good, good job. I have another one there for, uh, through the chair and Mr. Spencer on, um, seven of fifty-three, we discussed, I brought up, uh, a possibility of installing lighting at the Legion Way, and I was down to the Horseshoe Committee, the Horseshoe people last week at the Legion, and wondering if we can't crisscross, there's only two, they're only worried about the two, uh, pits closest to the Legion, to the Legion, because they, uh, only use them at, like, at night when it's darker? And I wonder if we can't maybe look at, put in a light, just one this way, and I'll get the Legion, maybe put one the other way to crisscross, you know? So it's not in everybody's eyes. Do you think you could look at that? Through the chair, the light, Spencer, on that, please?
Through the chair, I, I, the direction of council, if that's what the, the wish is, then I will, I will work into it.
We have it.
Have, have the lights been installed?
No.
No, okay.
So, since the least, look at it, see what we can come up with to help.
So, um, just going, just looking for, for information here. So, then there's been nothing done about the lights at all? You're waiting for a, uh, a suggestion from council, is that correct?
Uh, through the chair, so, um, after last meeting, um, I, uh, had a conversation with, with Councilor Dillabon. Um, I had our electrician down on site, and where they were looking to put the lights, what, what Councilor Dillabon was originally wanting was to put them on the roof of the pavilion, basically shining towards the pit. And it would be okay if you, if you had your back to the pavilion, but if you're at the other end, like, on the water end facing the pavilion.
You're gonna be blinded.
You'd be blinded by the lights.
Yeah.
So, then, the other alternative was to put the pole back up that was there, but there's a cost to that of about five thousand dollars, to put a new pole in, to run the wiring to that pole, and then to put two lights on that pole that basically would do as Councilor Dillabon is asking now to kind of go off on each side as opposed to a direct impact on the, the pits themselves. So it was left at that. Uh, Councilor Dillabon said he would speak with, uh, the members of the Legion, and, uh, this is, that's where we're at this evening.
Okay.
So, just through the chair, uh, if, if we can, we can put one light up on the pavilion, but I'll talk to the Legion first, but the other ones will crisscross, and I think that will, will do, uh.
So you'll, okay, you'll talk to the Legion and bring it back at a meeting?
I will, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
So, so there's some talk about, it's the two pits closest to the Legion building?
Yes.
Does that not conflict with the item that we have in our agenda about them using that area to extend their deck, their outdoor patio?
That's the last item in our package here. I see we have, I see we have a new photo on the table tonight.
Yes.
Uh, giving us a, a bigger picture, or a high-level picture, of where they intend to extend their patio.
Correct.
It fully encompasses those first two pits.
It actually encompasses.
First six?
The first six pits, so I'm sure there'll be discussion on that, uh, when we get to, uh, seven J. I'm, I'm not, by looking at this, at this photograph, it doesn't appear that lights that are going to be on the pavilion are going to be bright enough to light the entire area, is it?
Don't want the area, just want the first two pits closest to the Legion.
So, okay, so what is, what is it we're gonna be after, a pole, or?
No, hopefully we can put one on the Legion, one on the pavilion, to rectify that.
Well, all right, you'll have to speak to the Legion about that and then bring that up.
That's right, yes.
Okay, so, bring, yeah, okay. Anything else, Counselor?
I'm fine, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, any?
Yeah, page, page six of fifty-three, item eight, deals with, um, planting of trees, and I know that the indication here is that, uh, that the trees would be planted in the fall, uh, new trees confirms that new trees will be planted, uh, so on, and I know someplace else in the minutes it said in the fall, so we can plant trees anytime after the first of September. My question is, have we sourced them? We know how many we've sourced, and can we, uh, get an idea as to how many, and when, and even maybe to some extent, where? Through the chair.
Uh, through the chair, to Mayor Sayah, so, um, I've contacted the Seaview Conservation Authority, they have a, a pro, uh, program that's out, and, um, I sent an email, uh, two weeks ago to indicate that we, uh, were interested in potentially obtaining some of the trees, and they are just in the initial stages of putting out their release, and he said that he would get back to me within the next, uh, I believe by the end of August is what the email indicated. So we do have a good opportunity to obtain, uh, some of the trees through the Seaview program.
Well, we're talking, uh, broadleaf trees here, not vines, right?
That's correct. Similar to the ones, um, that we put up three years ago across the street from the, uh, Cardinal Library on that vacant lot?
Yes, that we're talking about, that size of tree?
Similar in size to that, that is correct.
Fair enough.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
No.
Councilor Hunter?
Uh, just a couple of follow-up on the questions that have been asked. We were talking, these, these lights, we don't have nothing in the budget for, but the lights up there, who's paying for these lights?
I think that would probably be a discussion when Councilor Dillabon brings back his, his information.
On our, our tree situation, when we're planting these trees, when they're, they're gonna be planted down, down in the area where there's a lot of children and stuff around there, are, are we gonna put a protective guard around them for the first couple of years to, in the parks and provincial parks and stuff, and then they have a wire guard sets out around them to protect them, to keep kids from, kids would be kids, grab a hole and swing on them or something.
Noted, uh, I'll, I'll just refer that to, uh, Mr. Spencer?
Noted.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor? Mr. Packwood?
No.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, folks, but I, I just have to clarify something here. Uh, I meant, I meant to do this at the beginning of the meeting, but as you'll see, Mr. Bush is not with us tonight. Um, uh, he unfortunately has succumbed to a broken ankle, and he was at the hospital this afternoon, uh, being treated, and he's unable to make it, uh, tonight, but I'm fully expecting him to be here for the, for the next week. It, uh, it was either that or I was going to say, uh, "Mr. Bush, I think you've shaved your beard." If that's not the case. Anyway, Mr. Bush is, uh, is, is not with us tonight, so. Okay, uh, and I, uh, my questions that I had were, were answered, so we're going to move on to, um, delegations and presentations, and we have none tonight, uh, so, uh, and number six is discussion items, and there's nothing listed tonight, uh, so that brings us to our, uh, action information items, and, uh, that brings us to seven K, which is the Digital Service Squad, uh, Grant Program, and I actually believe that this item was to be on the CDC meeting, which was, uh, which was canceled for lack of quorum, um, and I believe, um, our CAO is going to speak to this, am I correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm going to give it the college try.
Very good.
Yes, correct, this was originally put on the CDC meeting for, for, for August fourth without the quorum, and given the, sort of the, the timeline with respect to submission of applications, sooner is better, so we're bringing it forward here at, at Public Works to, uh, gauge, um, Committee and, and Council's, uh, commitment in, in, in participating in sort of a regional approach, uh, to this program. So the Digital Main Street, um, is, is a program and service that helps, uh, Main Street businesses achieve, uh, digital transformation. Uh, originally created by, uh, an association in Toronto, and it's supported by, uh, corporate sponsors such as Google, uh, Mastercard, Rogers, uh, Microsoft and Shopify, so. Uh, this particular grant is, is funded by the Government of Canada and, and the Province of Ontario, and the grant, uh, covers, um, equipment, marketing, travel, cell phone costs, PPE and squad, uh, member salary. It's sort of, uh, eligible businesses are, uh, in between one to ten employees, or one to twenty-five if you're a, a restaurant or, or bar. So, um, our Community Development Coordinator sort of estimates that there's about twenty-six, um, eligible businesses, uh, which would equate to the possibility of sixty-five hundred dollars in funding, so. As far as the financial end of it, uh, one hundred percent of the eligible costs are covered, uh, through the program, and, uh, the Community Development Coordinator has, has been on several conference calls, uh, with respect to other, other members within the United Camps of Leeds-Gremble Business Support Working Group, and, uh, the, our recommendation is that we, uh, support a regional approach, in partnership with, uh, with the United Camps of Leeds and Gremble, in order to maximize, uh, service to small businesses and, and leverage as much funding as possible.
Good, thank you.
Some.
Questions, yes?
Simple recommend, simple recommendation, and I, and I quite agree with it, it being done on a county, uh, on a countywide basis. I think they have, uh, a better capacity, and so I'm, uh, prepared to move the recommendation, looking for a seconder.
Thank you. Seconded, uh, Mark, is Mark Packwood, Mr. Packwood, thank you. Um, you've had a chance to go over the briefing note, uh, committee, so I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's carry, thank you. Now, that brings us to seven B, which is the, um, Treasury, uh, Report, and it is the, uh, the second quarter Budget Variance Water and Sewer Systems, and, uh, that is, uh, on pages sixteen to twenty-two, and this is information item only. Um, uh, Melanie, can you highlight this for us, please?
Certainly, um, through, through the chair, uh, this is the second quarter. I do, um, apologize for the fact that we never provided, uh, Committee with a first-quarter budget, um, variance report, um, kind of was in the middle of our, co, beginning of our COVID, uh, pandemic and slipped the, uh, slipped staff's mind at that point in time, um, but, uh, in, in an overall, um, high level, um, all of the operating, all of the water sewer systems are, are seeing, uh, uh, their operating revenues, um, up in comparison to twenty nineteen at this same timeframe, um, that's mainly due to, of course, the twenty-twenty rate increases in most of those systems. Um, our overall year-to-date operings are, expenses are in line with most of our, uh, last year's this same time, um, other than in, in, when there's, uh, staffing, our salaries and benefits, that's a little bit lower due to a shift in, uh, in the operators. We have a, a, um, newer employee which has lowered those salaries and benefits, um, and then I just gave you a little idea, a little, uh, snapshot of where the capital projects are. Uh, only one has really been completed, which is Cardinal Waters Controller. It was completed under budget, um, the other, other, uh, projects on each of the systems are, are in progress at this point.
Thank you. Questions?
I have several.
I'll start with you then.
Okay, so, uh, just want to get one thing clear before I start out here. So I'm looking at, for, to start with that dispensable wastewater report, the prior year actual is two June the thirtieth, right?
That is correct.
That's the half year.
Yes.
The current year budget is the full year.
Correct.
And then the current year actual is two June the thirtieth.
Correct.
So if I look at it from the point of view of current year actual, and I say, "Well, seventy-eight thousand nine oh four represents a half a year, doubling that, I should get to one fifty-seven."
Mm-hmm.
Now, one fifty-seven is gonna be a little bit less than the current year budget, be about three thousand less, I mean, that's, now I know it's early at this point of the year, and it may not be apples to apples, but, and I noticed that, uh, there's a thirteen thousand dollar transfer from reserves there that, uh, probably skews the picture completely. Um, so, am I, am I right in thinking, well, if I take the thirteen out of the one sixty, but that's current year budget, it, that, that was anticipated transfer from reserves, was that for the, the, uh, OCEP pro, project, or?
No, the transfer from reserves is to offset the capital that's, uh, capital project that's in that system this year.
Which is the splitter box?
Splitter box, yeah.
Okay, so, that current, that, that hasn't been accounted for in the current year actual, then?
It has not until, until such time as that project is complete, and we know the actual amount, and usually towards the end of the year, once all of the expenses have been accounted for, then we determine what, what amount has to be transferred to reserves to make it, um, even, whether there's either a deficit or surplus.
Okay, so to get a real, uh, look at just revenue from the system.
Mm-hmm.
I'd have to compare the seventy-eight, double the seventy-eight would be, what? Eighty and eighty, eighty and eighty is one sixty, so, uh, one sixty less four, or one fifty, one fifty-six, would be over what's budgeted at one forty-five, is that the right way of looking at that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Now, going down then to the expenses, um, there's fifty-two thousand of expenses so far, doubling that would come to one, one oh five, which would be more than the one thirty-two that's budgeted. No, less than one oh.
Less than.
Less than the one thirty-two that's budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Then there's, uh, then there's the capital comes in, uh, later on of that, okay, so I, I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm reading this thing right. And so you're saying that all of the revenues in all of the systems will be more than the revenues collected last year?
In comparison, for sure.
In comparison?
Yes, and mostly due to, to a rate increase that was in each system.
Right, okay. And what we can't really, uh, judge at this point in time is where the expenditures will end up.
Correct.
Okay, so now, I'm just looking quickly at, at one called Edwardsburg Water Distribution Report. Now, is that the same as Industrial Park Water that I see elsewhere?
Yes.
Okay, so Industrial Park Water, uh, I think the reserve fund number is ninety-eight three eight zero four. Is that where the nineteen four thirty is gonna go? Into, into ninety-eight three oh four?
Yes, that will go there.
Okay.
If we end up at that value.
Yeah. Okay, but we're budgeting to transfer that amount, right?
Correct, we could have more.
Yes, we could have more, but if we budget to transfer that amount, we should be assured, provided that our revenues come in the way we hope, and we keep our expenses in line, we should be assured of at least that amount.
Correct.
Okay, s, the, the reason I ask that is because the nineteen four thirty doesn't show as transfer in on this last report that we had.
On the reserve schedule?
Yeah.
Correct, because it has not, uh, done, been done.
Okay.
Uh, when there's transfers to a fund, it always is done by resolution of council.
Okay, all right. Yeah, but I thought that last report we had sort of showed what we had budgeted to transfer in.
There might, you might have had a budgeted transfer reserve schedule at the end of the budget, but, um, your quarterlies would not show a budgeted value.
Okay, so, we'll just watch that one. So now, I'm looking at, quickly at the raw waters, through the chair, I made, looking at the raw water supply system report, again, we're budgeting, uh, well, comparing one oh three to one, one oh three, which is comparable. And, uh, so on the expenditure side, well, on the current year actual, trying to think how, uh, how do I, what are the comparable numbers here? One oh three revenue compares to the one oh three revenue on the... No, the fifty-one compares with the forty-three, right? And shows that we're generating more revenue in the first half than we did in the first half last year.
Correct.
And then the expenditure, the thirty-one compared, the thirty-one five compares with the thirty-one oh two four, ignoring the twenty, that's a transfer to reserve funds.
Correct.
Okay, and the Cardinal wastewater? We know infrastructure grants on that one. Cardinal sewer revenue? The four eighty, five forty-six is revenue, and that compares, that's full year. Five forty-six is the full year revenue, is it not? Does we anticipate?
Is that in the wastewater, sir?
Yeah, Cardinal wastewater.
Cardinal wastewater is our budgeted revenue.
Okay, so, if, if I double the two forty that we've already collected so far, I'll come to four eighty-one, so that will be less than what's budgeted for revenue, will it not?
Well, to some extent, the, the only concern, or the only issue with the Cardinal Water and Wastewater Reserve, or re, revenues, is that, uh, Rio St. Lawrence provides us with those billings, and they bill from the fifteenth to the fifteenth, so this would actually only be to the fifteenth of June, even though it's, uh, revenue to the, or the, the whole, uh, recorder is to the thirtieth. I wouldn't get, you'll, you get, get a split month in, in your revenues.
Okay, but does that not balance out with the split month at the beginning of the year?
No, no.
It doesn't?
No.
Why, why is that? I don't understand that.
It carries through to the end of the year, and then we accrue the balance of, uh, of the fifteen days or half a month back into twenty twenty.
Okay, I see.
So we always lose, we always don't reflect fifteen, at least fifteen days of.
Okay, so the prior year actual of two thirty-nine would be the.
Comparable.
The actual that was received last year, including that.
The same timeframe.
Beg pardon?
It's the comparable for the same timeframe.
It is, okay, all right. And I think, I think that was my questions, then, um, for those, for those accounts, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
Nope, not at all.
Counselor Hunter?
No, looks like you're stating no matter, you're coming out ahead of last year, expenses are staying down, good job done.
Good.
Good, uh, okay, thank you. I just have a couple of, of, uh, questions for clarification, and the first one is on page nineteen, um, and it is, uh, item number fifty-three dash fifty-six twelve, Industrial Park Water Line Maintenance. There was a, there was the budget, uh, current year budget of two thousand, I believe it is, and there's an actual expenditure of fifty-two sixty. Uh, what was, why are we so high there?
Without actually looking at that specific line item, I can answer it, but I can, uh, refer to the executive operations.
Through the chair, I think the expenditure came in for the water meter, went into Giant Tiger, uh, they had a faulty water meter, and we switched it out. The original water meter was purchased by Giant Tiger, which isn't the general routine, they just purchased it, installed it when the building was being made, so typically the township owns the water meter, in this case we did not, uh, so we bought a water meter and replaced it. Uh, it's a special type of water meter that's resistant to, um, sudden, uh, surges and so forth, we think will happen, and may have been a surge, and the mechanics of the, uh, the original water meter were damaged, so we put in a, a sonar-type, uh, meter in, that, uh, there's no moving parts, that it actually, the water's passing through to prevent any future problems with that.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up to that?
Yes, go ahead.
So, but the follow-up to that is that it was estimated that, and I, I, it's under the heading Industrial Park Water Line Maintenance, and I don't know whether that's what was anticipated when the estimated amount of two thousand dollars was, uh, put into the budget, but if it was, if that was the item, uh, why would the estimate be actually half of more, less than half of what it turned out to be, fifty-two hundred? That meter, uh, would be a, a priceable item prior to budget, would it not?
Uh, the meter was several thousand dollars.
Beg pardon?
The meter was several thousand dollars, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but.
If, 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 if I may, through, through, through the chair, uh, that, that meter, uh, item, uh, with respect to the purchase of that meter came after, uh, after budget was approved.
Okay, so then what did the two thousand relate to?
Uh, that's, I, I, I would anticipate that, that, uh, it, it's just, uh, routine, uh, distribution, uh, maintenance, and maybe, uh, repair of, uh, of a, uh, sample station or, or something of that nature. I, I, I'm not that, I'm not that aware of.
Okay. I mean, I'm, okay, so, it's not material here.
Okay. Okay, and my other question is, uh, on, uh, page twenty-two, on, under revenues, uh, fifty-eight forty-two ninety-nine, and, uh, where the current year budget is three thousand, and the actual is seventy-seven, which is, well, a good thing, uh, I'd just like to, just like to know why it's, uh, it's a little higher than what we budgeted.
Through, through the chair, both, uh, the water and wastewater, both are over, uh, over budget or estimated, uh, revenue, uh, due to, uh, new installations.
New installation?
Yeah, like water connections.
Oh. So, so, yeah, so, i- i- if I may, it, 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 the bulk of it is, uh, Waddell Street.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
With respect to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, well, women, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So if it's Waddell Street, is that, is that taken in on line item forty-two ten?
It is taken in on forty-eight forty-two ninety-nine.
Forty, fifty-eight forty-two ninety-nine?
Yes.
Okay, but that's not, um, that's not revenue to the system, that is supposed to go straight to a reserve account, or if we're talking the fifteen hundred dollars per hookup, fifteen water, fifteen sewer, times three, that, that money is supposed to go directly to the reserve account, not, not to operating revenues.
It's identified in that line specifically to know what the amount was that was, uh, collected. It's identified in that line specific to know how much was, um, received that goes into reserves.
Sorry, yeah?
It's ident. It's identified in that line specifically so that we know how much is collected during the year to go into reserves. So it's not, it's not included in the other revenue lines, so that we know exactly how much was collected, excuse me, was collected.
Okay, so, so it's, okay, so it's sort of earmarked for transfer?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and that's all, that's all my questions, thank you, thank you, and that brings us to seven C, and this is pages twenty-three to twenty-six, and this is information item, and it is the second quarter fire report, and Chief Moore, you handled them in the past? I'm sure you'll handle this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, not a lot to report, I will point out a couple of little things, burn complaints, you see, we're up to ten burn complaints in the second quarter, that was directly related to the burn ban that we had on early in the year, and just to note that those burn complaints aren't, they're not paged out to the, to all the members, it's just a phone call to myself or one of the deputies, so of those ten calls, it's usually just a one-person response to deal with that burn complaint. Under fire losses, you see, we've, we did have a house fire, that was our first residential structure in well over a year. And down towards the bottom of page two, burn permit activity, we've been very busy since we, since we did lift the burn ban, with seventeen hundred and forty-four registered burns in quarter two, compared to six twenty-five last year. And on the next page, at the bottom of the chart on the daily burn permit activations, you can see obviously where the burn ban ended on May the eighth, and that shows you a statistic as to how many burns are happening each day.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, questions? Deputy Mayor?
Just one, to the chief through the chair, the, right where we just were, the activity for the burn permits, there's, you know, a hundred and seventy new ones, a good portion of Q two was, was burn banned, correct?
Through the chair, that is correct, yes.
Yeah, sure, so, so having sixty percent, I mean, or, excuse me, higher than that, like, that's a lot of burn, burn permits, what do you equate the, like, people being home more, like, what, what, why? Is it the, like, the ability to report it so much easier now, like, why, why is it so much harder to share?
Through the chair, I think it's a combination of both more, more use in the, in the burn permit system, this is our second full year, so we, we captured a lot of people last year, and also, obviously, the pandemic, there were a lot of people off this spring, everybody was cleaning their yards, and there were piles everywhere that just kind of sat there and waited until the burn ban lifted, and then all of a sudden, everybody was cleaning their yards.
Is it, through the chair, is it, is it partial, could it be partially just, you know, success of the program, like, that we're putting forward too, like, yeah, it's a considerable amount more.
I agree that there's an increase in, in compliance, I think we were only ever with the paper permits around the six hundred a year, and I think we're up to almost fourteen hundred users in the system now, they don't all have active permits, but that's how many users we have, so.
That's great, good, thank you.
Counselor?
I just want, want to question around information, in your map here, where you have the different areas, the amount of burns, what's the significance between the ones that have the red colored rings and just ordinary numbers, just the volume, or?
That is correct, I don't, I don't know the exact number where the colors change, but, but basically, I think they go from, from yellow to red based on the number in that area.
Second, okay, okay, Counselor Dillabon?
Yeah, I just had one, do the chair to the chief, is, I guess, probably is because of the dryness and everyone being home, but our grass fires are way up compared to twenty nineteen in the, in the second quarter, I would think that's why.
That's, that is correct, yes. Good, thank you.
Okay, anything else? There's no recommendation, this is information, thank you, move us to seven E.
Do I get a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I did not, yeah, go ahead.
If you wouldn't mind, through the chair, to the chief, back to the burn complaints there, where you were talking about the ten compared to the one last year, or, excuse me, to the six, did you say that that's mostly just a single person responding to that?
Through the chair, that's correct, we, our instructions to fire dispatch is to have them call me directly on my cellphone.
So, what kind of complaints are they?
Just generic burn complaints, everybody knew there was a burn ban on, they see somebody burning, and someone phoned in, yes.
Okay, all right, I just want to get that clear, and then down under the fire losses, there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollar loss for a transport trailer and contents, is that on a four hundred series highlight?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and the other thing that I just wanted to, I didn't want to let it go by, but I'm looking, I see that that's not really comparable, your total column there is for Q one and Q two, is that correct? And, and so to get the comparable for twenty nineteen, I have to just add the first two columns, okay, I'll, I'll let that go. Now, going back to, or up to the next page, where you're saying updates and changes to department, on the third bullet point says hydrostatic tested, testing completed on fifty-two SCBA cylinders with ten due next year, is that ten tests that are due next year, or is it ten cylinders that are due for replacement?
Through the chair, the, the SCBA that we purchased five years ago, the carbon fiber cylinders require a hydrostatic testing every five years, so the original fifty-two that we purchased were due this year, we purchased an additional ten the following year, so those ones will be due next year.
For a test?
For testing, correct.
Okay, all right. And, under fire prevention activity, review LPG risk, just can't remember what LPG is.
Liquid propane.
Okay, okay.
Gas.
And, thank you very much, that's, those were my questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, fine, thank you, and, thank you, and we'll just carry on then to seven D, which is on pages twenty-seven and twenty-eight, information item on MDO calls, and Chief Moore, could you highlight this for us, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, same as every report for the, for the first half of the year, substantial decrease in our calls, in opposite the, the burn permits, I believe just with travel, that's, that was going on at the beginning of the pandemic, so we only had nine calls in the first half of the year, and two of them were eligible for payment, I believe the, the second one in the column on the right, the four thousand three sixty-five, I believe that was the, the transport fire that was referred to in the report.
You've just answered my question.
Yeah, except for the fact that we responded to nine calls that we didn't get paid for.
Right, exactly.
We are improving, though.
Yeah, well, that's not, that's not our fault, and it's not the ministry's fault, and the guys are still going out.
Yes, go ahead.
Just focusing on those that we don't get paid for, again, a little tiny bit more, can you tell us a little bit more about them, are they wave-offs, is there any opportunity that we could stop and perform a service that we could get paid for? Are the guys looking for an opportunity to get paid, and do they watch for an opportunity?
Through the chair, we take every opportunity we can to provide a service.
Well done, Chief.
Wasn't sure how that was going to come out.
Well done.
I can, perfectly.
Well, you know, it's all right to say, but that's six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars that we don't see, we did, we did perform a service, our, our volunteers responded from their homes, they manned our equipment, they spent at least an hour away from their families, they attended the scene, maybe they were waved off, probably they were, they may have been waved off as they were halfway there, but doesn't matter how you cut it, we performed a service there, so, anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Dillabon, do you have anything?
Absolutely not.
Deputy Mayor, Counselor, okay, okay, my, my, my only comment on the MDO calls is, you know, I wish the province would look at it and, and look at the safety issue, with our people being out there, whether they're, whether they perform anything or whether they don't, there's a safety issue, just riding in the truck alone is, is safety, and I think we should be compensated for it, but we'll continue to deal with the ministry on that. That brings us to seven E, which is pages twenty-nine and thirty, and this is disposal of surplus goods for the fire department, and there is a recommendation with this, so, Chief Moore, would you give us some highlights, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so as Council is aware, we've, we've updated our jobs of life at both stations over the past couple of years, all the equipment that we replaced is, is basically obsolete, they, they are still selling systems that operate under that principle, but, but nobody's buying them. The, the retailer, he was not interested in taking anything on trade because it just didn't hold any value for him, being that it's not something that is really an interest to the general public, staff's recommendation is that we reach out to a couple of our other local fire departments here that might be able to utilize the systems as, as backups or spare, or to add to an existing system in a smaller department that's still, still using that technology. Just in, in the spirit of regional cooperation that we've all been, been talking about lately, I think that's an appropriate way to dispose of the goods.
Thank you, Chief, turn it over to questions, Counselor Dillabon.
Nope, I agree, I think it's a good recommendation that we can give it, do you think it'd be material, Chief? Like, would you shoot for material?
Shooting for local, means local.
Okay, good, yeah, my full support.
Just a question through the chair to the chief, again, looking at the recommendation, very simple recommendation, I'm prepared to move it, looking for a second, or, but I have a question, the county fire service review that's going on, do we know, and I know the review is in its early stages, do we know that, for example, the other departments are using the same type of equipment that we've now purchased, so that there's some standardization of that equipment across the system? And the second part of that question is, do we know from that fire service review if there are any other fire departments in the county that is using the old type of equipment that we're trying to get rid of? I'm just curious, maybe the fire service review hasn't gone to that point yet.
Through the chair, I can, I can provide that information just from my own personal knowledge, not, not through the, through the study. Both, both answers are yes, our, our equipment is, to say it's compatible now is actually redundant because each piece operates on its own, they're, they're battery-powered, rechargeable, so instead of having a system of hoses and connections, the cutter works by itself, the spreader works by itself, the ram works by itself, so there's no, there's really no issues with intercompatibility anymore with that type of a system, and I know there still are a few, a few departments that are, that are operating on the old system that, you know, they don't do as many motor daxons as we do, the ones away from the, the four hundred series highways generally.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, looking for a second.
Yes, so, I'll get to that, yes, I'll, I'll get, I'll get to that in a moment, but I think Counselor Hunter wants to come in here?
Well, I'm opposed to a recommendation completely, I think, time given equipment and stuff, stuff away, this is fire, fire equipment, and it's all basically hydraulic equipment, cutters and spreaders are, are basically used in the wrecking industry, industry and mechanic industry and stuff, I think it needs to be the same as their, our mowers, put on live, live auction, if it doesn't sell on there, okay, then you can see what given it away, but we're told two mowers here were scrapped, and they just brought in three thousand dollars, so, I think taxpayers pay for this, that equipment needs to be put on, see what we can recruit back over it, so.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Mr. Packwood?
Counselor Hunter's got a good point there.
Thank you, okay, we have, we have a suggestion to change the recommendation to more or less put it on, on auction, is that, is that what?
I'm saying auction, or did, or mowers, see what we can get in there.
Well, I moved the recommendation, so I'll backtrack a little bit, I didn't anticipate that you would think that there would be some public interest in this, but what you're saying is that it's basically hydraulically operated equipment, anybody that's, there may be somebody that has a use for it, they would have to have, what would, I'm looking at the lists of equipment, what would they have to have, they would have to have their own, they would have to have their own power source, is that correct?
Got covered hydraulic pump.
Okay, so that's a pump that stands on its own with hydraulic?
Almost every automobile repair shop, such as a body shop, would probably, possibly have some use, possibly have a use for these pieces.
Oh, I see, okay, well, I'll, I'll backtrack and, and withdraw the recommendation, the movement, and in, in deference to, to Counselor Hunter's comments.
Any other, any other comments on the change of recommendation? Hearing none, so, staff, do you have enough information to, to change that recommendation? And should it just say that it should go to public auction?
Well, dispose of all, if it is changed, the recommendation.
Clear the, like, surplus to the needs of the township, and authorize staff to dispose by public auction?
Yes, or just by option one?
Very good.
We're not voting on this?
Yes, we will, but we need the recommendation first.
And a second.
Yes. We, okay, with that, okay, through the recommendation, which goes to option one, from option three, can I have a second, please? A second with, with Counselor Hunter, all in favor? And that's carried.
Change this right around.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, that brings us to seven F, pages thirty-one, thirty-two, another information item, and this is regarding the arena opening guidelines, and Mr. Spencer has supplied us with a, with a comprehensive briefing note, and Mr. Spencer, something you'd like to highlight here?
Just the one thing I didn't put in there, as this report was completed early last week, I just wanted to send it to my facility operators for the first job that they've done over the last nine days, getting the ice ready for opening on Saturday, as I indicated earlier to Counselor Dillabon, the arena opened up on Saturday, and we didn't have any issues, parents have adapted to not be able to come into the arena, what we're allowing is one parent per session to be in the lobby, in case there's an issue with the, with the player on the ice, that they can retrieve the parent from outside if, if there becomes any type of issue, there is a trainer in the facility at all times, that the team or the association that is running the ice has, so the trainers, the coaches are in the facility, but the parents are not, we've set up, as I indicated, some extra picnic tables across the street in the, the second ball field, we've also put two portable louthouses there, and they'll be there for the next month while we go through this transition.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Spencer, I'm going to... I'm going to questions.
Through the chair to Mr. Spencer. One parent, period. Not one parent per child, is it? It's one parent over the fifteen kids if there is there inside the rink. Is that right?
Once the session starts, yes. So, sorry, through the chair to Counselor Dillabah. So if it's the younger groups, Adam, like we had group of Adam kids on there today, there were kids that aren't able to lace their own skates up. So a parent is allowed to come in to the facility, into the change room to do that, and then they have to leave. They have to fill out a waiver form. All the players that are on the ice, I get a completed form from the contract, the person who has the contract. So the kids don't have to fill out a waiver form every day, but we have all their contact information on the form. And then one parent stays in the lobby while the kids are on the ice.
Good. Thank you. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, sure, through the chair, Mike. Have we... Across the province, there's been a regional approach to reopening on lots of different things. Not having a positive test in our area since March of June, I guess, or end of June. Has there been any discussion as a regional approach to reopening? I know like our industry, they held it, you know, they held Toronto back, they held everywhere else that there were still, you know, higher loads of cases. But, I mean, we're doing it. And you're... This is excellent, don't get me wrong. But have there been any discussions for, you know, a more regionalized approach to reopening these facilities?
Through the chair to my Deputy Mayor. The problem with our... We'll go to a hockey scenario, we're supposed to figure skating. But for the hockey, it's Hockey Eastern Ontario. And it develops its four separate health units that HEO has to deal with. And Ottawa have different guidelines. And that's the problem. I mean, right now in Ottawa, you can only put twenty kids on the ice. Now, that might have changed as of Friday when they put the new guidelines in. But as of Friday, only twenty kids could go on the ice there. We're allowing thirty at this time. We could allow fifty, but we're going in a slow approach, to make sure that we're able to get the kids in and out of the facility, we're able to clean the facility in a timely manner. So your answer to your question?
Yeah.
No, there isn't. There hasn't been much discussion about it.
Any follow-up, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I'm gonna think about it.
Counselor, do you have anything?
Through the chair to Mike. As you're coming in, I understand each association team that comes in has to have a rep that presents you with a list of all the kids' names and contacts that's coming into the rink. And I assume includes whatever parents coming in too on that list. And they have to have that prepared ahead of time. You don't do it... That's up to the team to have that to hand to you, isn't it?
Through the chair to Counselor Hunter. So everyone that is renting ice for us for the next six months have a copy of our waiver form. That's for the parents. So if a parent's coming in, they're not on the team list. The only list that we want are the kids that are actually on the ice and the coaches and the trainer. The parents have to fill out a form. There won't be... Like, for example, the Rito St. Lawrence teams were on the ice yesterday at the Adam level. I was presented with a team list for everybody that was on the ice, the three coaches and the trainer. That's that list. Ten parents that came in to help those kids get dressed, we have a waiver form for that, and we collect those waiver forms. And then we connect those waiver forms to that team list, and we store that in my office for thirty days.
So follow up basically then, whatever parent's gonna come with a kid that day, do they pick the form up at the rink? Or do they have to print the form off before they come to bring it with them?
Through the chair to Counselor Hunter. They have all been sent forms via the association that they are dealing with or the group that is renting the ice. They have copies of that. But we also have copies at our front desk. I have one of our summer students that hands the front desk because the arena is... The front doors are locked to the arena. They're only open fifteen minutes prior to. And we have these forms there for someone that hasn't printed one off.
We have a desk set up just inside?
Just inside the arena door.
Between the doors there?
That is correct. Yes.
Mr. Packwood?
I'd just say it's well known, Mike.
Mike, I just want to go back to, just a follow-up question, really. Just to go back to the number of adults that are allowed in the lobby. You have fifteen kids on the ice?
Thirty.
Well, we'll say fifty. Whatever, thirty, okay, thirty.
Hundreds on the ice.
There is only one parent allowed in the lobby for all those thirty kids? Or is it one parent per kid?
No, one parent in total.
Okay, so the other twenty-nine have to wait outside?
That is correct. And that's why we put the picnic tables out around the play structure and then across the street. And they were utilized this weekend on a number of occasions.
Okay, how many picnic tables are there?
We have five across the street. We have two beside the play structure. And we also have the bleachers that are right there at the pool building.
Right, okay. And are these the picnic tables from the water run?
Yes.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up question?
I... Yeah, I can go there, sure. Through the chair to Mike. It's a great report, Mike. I'm just struggling, you know, having a kid who's going back to school in a school that's gonna have several hundred kids in a facility that's smaller than our arena. And we hear every day why it's so important that our children are going back to school and that, you know, that their mental health and everything is great. Well, hockey is one of... Arenas are one of the best outlets for children. Play, to have the ability to get out and, you know, do something. They haven't done anything in months. And I think it's also a great outlet for the parents as spectators. And I really like... I don't know. And I don't know if we can get there or what. But, I mean, there's gotta be a way in that large building that we can offer some social distancing and have, you know, some... We push for a regionalized approach to opening. We don't have cases. Get some parents back into the rink and help their mental health as well. It's just, I don't know. I wasn't gonna go there, but just it bothers me to have it locked down. You know, as tight as we have it. And, I mean, our schools are gonna be reopened September first. Putting all the kids back in. And I know it's a different scenario, but...
Mr. Chairman? So, counterpoint to that argument, and I'm with the Deputy Mayor most of the way here, but I just want to put another thought on the floor here. And nobody's saying, and believe me, there's nobody hates this lockdown more than me, but let's look at it from a kind of a corporate point of view. We've got a system in place here which really minimizes the contacts. And you could say that we're being overly cautious if you wanted to, and maybe we are. But Facilities Manager has already indicated that this is a two-week trial period. And I'm sort of looking at it from this point of view. Let's wait until the schools open before we go that much farther. And if there's a big outbreak, it'll be on their shoulders, not ours. That's a... Maybe that's a selfish corporate point of view. But, you know, in the meantime, you know, it's on their heads, not our heads. And in due course, I think we will be opening up.
Oh, absolutely.
But we're taking a very conservative approach for the first couple of weeks.
Through the chair, if I may, just... So the first couple of weeks is, we do have day rentals. Not as much as we typically have, but we do have day rentals and night rentals. Once school starts, it'll just be night rentals. And that's where I thought, you know, let's wait the first two, two and a half weeks until school starts, and then it's strictly night rentals. And some of the associate... Some of the people that are renting the ice right now are private individuals that are not necessarily part of an association. And so there's different avenues there that you have to deal with.
Go ahead.
And you may have just hit on something too is, and I'm sure you know this already in your roles. While we may open it up and say that spectators are allowed, the very organizations may counter that and say that spectators aren't allowed.
I can't... Through the chair, Deputy Mayor, it's very unlikely that they will because the bulk of the associations would prefer that we let some in right now.
Right.
And so they're going by our guidelines.
Okay.
And, you know... So like I said, we've just had... We've had two days, and we're like, our third today. We had a couple of little hiccups yesterday where some kids were undressing in the dressing room and coming out fully dressed. And I approached the association and advised that if it happens again, the change rooms will be locked, and they won't be able to use them and even put their skates on. So I'm sure that'll switch. But like I said, it only takes one or two people to throw a curve into something. Whether or not it's the kid just doing it on his own or it's the parent saying, oh, just change in the room. I don't know. But we're hoping that doesn't happen going forward because a lot of these groups are on the ice for the next two weeks multiple times in the same group of people.
Yep, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Now we'll move on to seven G, and this is Parks and Recreation one more time, and it's the Ingridion Arena Webcam Purchase. And Mr. Spencer has given us a briefing note regarding this. And it's a, from what I understand, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a device where people can watch their children do whatever they do on the ice from a remote location outside the arena. So, Mr. Spencer, would you highlight the briefing note, please?
Certainly. So we've had a couple of inquiries, and as the briefing note says this, we did have a webcam set up two seasons ago at the Spencer Arena. That was put in by Joe and Peter and the restaurant. So the parents were able to drop their kids off for practices, and they were able to go down to the local establishment and have something to eat or drink. And they were able to watch their kid on the big screen TV down there. So I know our plan is for the next couple of weeks is to not let parents in. But I'm kind of looking a little bit farther ahead than just the two weeks. There's probably gonna be a time throughout the winter where, when the younger groups start, the novice and the Adam kids, that a lot of the grandparents potentially are gonna be a little skittish about coming out into public areas. And so they won't be able to watch their grandchildren potentially be on the ice, whether it be hockey or skating, figure skating. So if we were to install two webcams in the facility, one facing the benches and one at the other end, that would basically get two full shots of the arena. Individuals will be able to log on to our township website, and we would have a link created. And they would just click the link, and it would be a live webcam of the activity that's going on at the arena at that time. So I spoke with our IT people on SERV, and they put me in contact with a company. And the pricing for the two webcams and to run all the necessary hardware and the licensing for the two webcams is listed in the recommendation.
So the recommendation says using the Safe Restart Agreement municipal operating funding, is that the... So does that come under the heading of COVID-19 expense?
Through the chair to the mayor, I would think it does because it's potentially not allowing... Sorry. It won't be not allowing older potential people to come into the arena, but it's certainly gonna restrict some people from going out this winter because of the COVID situation that they are potentially afraid of contracting it. So the elderly people who potentially on a Saturday or Sunday, when, say, Ron Baker's group is on the ice and there's fifty kids on the ice, you know, there's probably seventy-five grandparents in the stands watching. Well, we may only get twenty grandparents in the stands now because the other ones may not want to go. So this is an opportunity for them to be able to potentially watch their children.
But that funding that it's referring to, is that the latest round of funding?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, so I mean, we know that there's dollars available.
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah?
No, I guess I think it's a great idea, and I will move the motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, again, think it's an absolute wonderful idea. Hockey fans are ravenous, especially, and I assume figure skating grandparents and parents are the same way. But a wonderful way to help support them, especially, you know, the last discussion where we only have one with the availability and some sitting in picnic tables. They can get out their cell phones and watch them while they're actually doing whatever inside. So it's a great counterpoint to the argument that I just tried to make. So wonderful idea.
As Deputy Mayor mentioned, I think it's great for hockey to also be having grandkids heavily involved in figure skating. I think it's great for the figure skating because being the grandparents are going there except for the live competition. All the girls that are there skating, I'd say ninety-nine out of a hundred people that are there are the grandmumbers or grandfathers that are there. The problem there to do. And I know with figure skating, hockey, not allowing any contact. So the odds and the equipment they're wearing, the younger kids, there's not much danger of them getting hurt. But figure skating at the first level of can skate, their helmets are off. The grandparents are there basically sitting in the hole watching just in case they fall and get hurt. With this system in there, they can sit outside in their car, or they can sit across the road at the restaurant. They can watch there, and if they see their grandkid fall, they can hustle right back over to the arena to be there. And I think it's a... And especially as with this new round of funding, it's a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars we've got there. And if we don't spend it, you know it's gonna be pulling back. So I think this is an excellent opportunity to get a chance to use it and help everybody who wanted to use it. I think so.
Mr. Packwood?
Excellent idea.
Great, okay. I just have a quick question, actually two. Number one is, people will be able to sit in the comfort of their home and actually watch this too, wouldn't they? So they don't even have to go to the parking lot or whatever.
That is correct.
And then the other question I have, Mike, is just in the future. When COVID is over and done with and everything is back to what might be normal, are these... What would these cameras be used for in the future?
Through the chair. To the chair. My plan would be that they'll stay there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Can I just make one more quick comment?
You sure can.
Being someone who rents a signboard as well and having absolute no value of that in a year in which your arena may be closed, this would offer, you know, some of those people the opportunity to at least have their board.
Definitely the ones... Oh, sorry, through the chair to...
Mine's not on that side.
Definitely the ones on the board side would be seen potentially.
Mine's on the other side, so I can see.
Maybe a little harder.
Actually, I thought your question was going to be make sure that the camera is trained on your side.
No, no, no. No, I already heard where it was pointed, so I could actually make that.
Okay, good, good. Okay, so we have a recommendation. We do have a mover. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Hunter, thank you. I'm going to call the question. All in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Okay, that brings us to item seven H. And that's on pages thirty-four and thirty-five of your package. And again, this is the Ingridion Center dehumidifier. There is a briefing note and information which has been sent out. You've had a chance to read. Could I have someone just highlight the briefing notes?
Certainly.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes, yep, I will. So as indicated, when the system was started up, it didn't seem to be running at full capacity. So we had some refrigeration in. They were at the facility, starting up the compressors. And they took a look at it and indicated that the rotor was not working at full capacity. They suggested that it be replaced. They gave me a price, I thought that the price was high. So I contacted another company, Alamo, Johnson Controls, who I will indicate in October of 2019 were the ones that replaced a fan motor in the arena, so they are familiar with the system. And their price came in at $25,700. So we gone ahead and ordered the part from Simcoe Refrigeration. There is a delivery lead time of three to four weeks. With this being a time when the humidity is extremely high in the arena, I felt it important to try to act as quickly as we could to come up with an alternate plan. Simcoe Refrigeration were willing to find a rented unit that would basically be parked outside the arena and used as an external unit. But we were looking at about $15,000 for that. As you remember in the budget deliberations last year, I had put some money in there to have one of the older units from the old Cardinal Arena installed at the Ingredion Center as a backup. And that was in the capital budget for last year, and it got cut. So what we did is we brought it out of storage, brought it over, had it, I guess you would say MacGyvered hooked up electricity wise, just to see if it was going to work. Simcoe came down and tested it, and it was, it was running fine. So then we went through the necessary processes to have it properly installed from electrical point of view. And it was turned on on Friday morning. The humidity level was at about 85% of the time inside the arena. Typically, it would be this time of year at about 55 or 60. And so we turned on the secondary one, and I came in to work on Saturday morning. And there was no condensation on the glass, on the boards, the walking track upstairs. There was no puddling of water coming off the I-beams. There's a little bit of condensation on the actual roof part, but you can go into any rate this time of year, and you're going to get, there's going to be some condensation. So it definitely is helping that that unit is running right now. Ideally, what I would like to do, again, we could look at this next year, but now that we know that that unit is operational, that we've moved that to the front of the arena. We had it hooked up at the back of the arena, because that was the easiest and the quickest way to hook it up from electrical point of view right now. It would have been a little bit more difficult to put it up on a mounting bracket on the wall up front where we actually want to have it to get its best operations out of it, but we'll look at that for next year. So that's what's transpired over the last week. Again, I was there today, and the humidity levels have dropped significantly. And both units are running, and good compliments from people that used the ice Saturday, Sunday, and again today. It's unfortunate that the part failed. In speaking with Munters, who are the manufacturer of the unit, you get 68 years out of these rotators on a normal hockey operation season. I would not consider our arena to be normal, I'd say that we're a little bit above normal, because the normal hockey season would go September to March, where we go August through till the end of, the end of May. So we got seven years out of that life expectancy, which potentially was looking at closer to nine years if you look at it from the months of operation. Staff routinely change the filters in the system, and we have had no issue other than, as I said, in October of 2019, we replaced the drive motor on it. Other than that, the system's been running extremely well.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Spencer? Mr. Dill, I'll start with Mr. Dill.
Thank you, to the chair, to the chair, to Mr. Spencer. You said we never had any problems at all, so when we closed in April of 2020, the the pressure on that wasn't up or anything like that, everything was working great?
That's correct.
That's good. And my second question is just wondering, like, the dehumidifier that we found in the back of the staff orientation was in the corner. And then we asked this year, I thought that the dehumidifier, to get it ready and going, and I thought staff said it was no good. I could be misunderstanding you, so, no, just one clarification on that.
What I said was that if we had approval to put one up at the front of the arena, that we would look at that one first, and if it was operational from Simcoe's respect, perspective, then we wouldn't have spoken to Prescott about obtaining one of their used ones.
Good. I thought you said it was no good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah, so I guess, to some extent, the problem has been partially remedied with the installation of a second unit, but what concerns me is that when humidity is high and the heat that we've had, the opportunity or the potentiality for mold to form is really extreme. And we get mold in the building, we all know what that means. It means the building closes down until we spend, you know, as they did in Prescott, something close to $100,000 to correct the mold problem. And what bothers me about it is that I was informed by one of the walkers, people that use the walking track, on Thursday, July the 23rd, that the humidity in the building was very, very high, and that one of the walkers had asked the staff why the dehumidifier wasn't working. And basically, they were brushed off by the staff. And they phoned me. And, you know, I contacted the CAO because we were due to have a council meeting on the 27th, which was the Monday. And so what I'm getting at is that the problem was known and brought to the attention of staff as early as, by one of the walkers, as early as July the 23rd, but the dehumidifier wasn't turned on, first sentence in the briefing note, started up on Friday, July the 31st, that's a whole week. So that's a whole week of high humidity, high heat, with the potentiality for mold. And even after it starts up, it's not working at full capacity. And, you know, I don't understand the mechanics, I shouldn't say that. I do understand the mechanics, I just don't understand the electrical, the electrical intricities of how it works. But I'm told that when these things are not working efficiently, there's a potentiality that they will fail in total. Obviously, the main system hasn't failed in total, so, but we still have, as I read from the briefing note, three to four weeks before the parts arrive that can bring it back into full functionality. So, you know, I'm a little bit concerned here. You know, I realize that we've got parts ordered, and I realize that we've got the the secondary system up and running, and that it is addressing the humidity problem. But to my mind, it doesn't address the real problem, which is the fact that the problem could have been dealt with a whole week earlier than it was. And I mean, here we are, what is it, today, August the 17th? So we're 17 days from startup, and actually 17 plus seven, 24 days from the time the problem was known. I'm a little bit concerned here. And again, when problems are brought to the attention of staff, even if they're brought to the, even if they're brought by walkers in the building, I think they should be addressed, not just fluffed off. So those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Mayor?
Just one for clarification, does the dehumidifier run all summer long when the ice isn't in?
Through the chair to the deputy mayor, no one does not.
Okay, so can I follow up? On the 23rd of July, when somebody was contacted to say the humidity was high, it was shut off?
It was not on.
It wasn't on. So it wouldn't have had, you wouldn't, like, there's no way to have known, because there's no ice in the rain. And the machine has no reason to be turned on.
That's correct.
So it didn't get turned on until the ice was starting to go in?
Seven days, or six days prior to the startup of the compressors.
Right. So the humidity level on the 23rd would have been that level no matter what?
That's correct.
Okay. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. The humidity is high whether or not they're putting ice in the building. The humidity in just any, in any environment during that period of July was high, inside a building. That's just humidity in the air, it's got nothing to do with the fact that they're making ice or not making ice.
Right.
But just, it's just water content in there.
So, but my point is that if a walker found it humid in there, the dehumidifier, dehumidifier wouldn't have any effect on it.
Of course it would.
It's not turned on, it wouldn't, there's no reason for it.
If it was turned on, it would. It would draw the humidity down. A dehumidifier dehumidifies the air.
Right. But I, my question was, when the ice isn't in, is the dehumidifier turned on? The answer was no. So if it's not normally on during the no ice times, on the 23rd, it had no reason to be on.
Yes, it did, because the humidity in the building was high.
Good.
Counselor?
I don't, I see the humidity might have been high in the building, but I I don't know of any arenas that run the dehumidifiers on the ice, even in special arenas. Probably went out there, the humidity was likely high, high in some other days too. Dehumidifiers are never turned on until they start to make ice. Humidity is high, it's high in all the rigs during the summer, so most of the time until you get the cold of the ice coming on the floor. And you don't get high humidity, because there's no moisture in there. We just had some real humid days, the rig being open, let people walk in, that just blows moist air got into the building, like they're sure.
But, Mr. Chairman, the point is that humidity and heat causes mold. Doesn't have to be 90% humidity. Go back to the experience that Prescott had. They had humidity form in their building over the summer. They never got there, they never got to the point of starting their ice machines, because the humidity was so high. They had to deal with that problem. Humidity is just a function of water content in the air. Heat and humidity causes mold. You reduce, you start up the dehumidifier to reduce the moisture content in the air. Nothing to do with whether you're making ice or not. When you start making ice, humidity level goes way up.
Mr. Packwood? Nothing? Okay. Okay, that was an information item, there's no, there's no recommendation on that. Just to follow up myself on Counselor Hunter's comments. There's not too many, not too many arenas around have people walking in the summer. We have, we have a blocking truck that's been used, and it, might just correct me up wrong, it's also was used last year and the year before, and so on, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And the dehumidifier was really never turned on?
It's never been turned on during the summer months.
Is there a way you can measure the humidity level in the arena section?
Absolutely.
And could that be monitored when we have a high humidity situation like we have had this year? And maybe in the future, consider turning the humidifier on, or the dehumidifier?
If that's, if that's the wish of council, I don't have a problem keeping an eye on the humidity levels. And if council wants the dehumidifiers turned on, then that's fine. Just also note that when the dehumidifier is on, and I understand Mr. Mayor's comment about mold and what have you, but to be quite honest, we inspect the facility throughout the summer, and there's not a drip inside that arena.
Doesn't have to be. Why would it have dripping water to cause mold?
It's a good indication that there is mold there, though.
Do? Just to, just to follow up to my other question.
And we were also, if I may, so, we had two council meetings there, and I didn't think that was that uncomfortable at those meetings. And I do periodically will walk up on the truck, and it's not bad.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to seven I, and that is pages 36 to 38 in your package. This is a cormerant control issue with OPG, and I believe Rebecca is going to highlight the briefing note for us.
Yes, thank you, Chair. As much as many of you are aware, the council at the time in 2016 started the cormerant control initiative, and we have been continuing with that program each year since. This year, the annual program requires license renewal for another year. So OPG, the Ontario Power Generation, has submitted to us an amending license agreement to renew effective August 1st until July 31st of 2021. So we're just seeking approval and authorization to enter into that agreement, so our trapper can access OPG lines.
Thank you. Any questions? You've had a chance to read the briefing note. Okay, I'm looking for a mover for a recommendation, and I have Counselor Hunter and a seconder.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Deschamps, thank you, and a couple of questions, all in favor? And the recommendation is carried, thank you. Okay, now we move to seven J, pages 39 to 43 of your package. And this is the Cardinal Legion branch, it'll be 105, the patio extension request. Due to COVID-19, they are requiring extra space for their patio. So Rebecca, are you, are you going to highlight this?
I can take a stab at as much information that we have at this point. So as Counselor Cameron has indicated, the Cardinal Legion has submitted requests mid-last week for the township to provide support and possibly permission to extend their licensed patio area to encompass a portion of township-owned land, i.e. a portion of the current horseshoe pits to accommodate for COVID-19 and healthy social distancing protocols. They are planning to include a snow fence as the way to block off the access, so that way they're only able to access the patio through the Legion, and as well as include no alcohol behind this point signage. And they have spoken with the Horseshoe League that are in full support of it, of course. It has just come to light today that my interpretation of horseshoe is very interpretation, different interpretation compared to the Legion. I counted six pits as being one and two on each side. That's apparently one pit, so instead of three, it's now six. My bad on that one, unfortunately. So I did add an extra layer to the complicated thing today, and encompassed in the green box what they're actually asking for. I thought it was about half of that size. So that affects.
So if I, if I, if I may, through the chairs to begin, because that information was brought to light today, not comfortable with the same recommendation. It's, it's, it's too large of an area. So I just, I was under the same impression as the clerk at the time, that we were looking at a much smaller area. The area that they're proposing to fence in is almost the size, if not the size of their entire building. I just, I just.
Unfortunately can't support the recommendation as, as it is.
I'm going, I'm going to go around the table and ask for questions of Mr. CAO, at that point, I'll come back to you regarding the recommendation. I'll start at, with Mr., or with Mr. Packwood.
Well, I can support that way it is. It's too big an area.
Thank you, Counselor.
No, I, I agree with her, she, she, oh, that you don't very often see any patios that are as, as bigger, almost bigger than the actual building that the patio is on. To me, it looks, the area, it looks more like a, a party area instead of a patio area, so I think where the line was drawn in the first place would look more to the side of what I'd consider a patio.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Sure, just general comments on, on what was there, the letters that was submitted. I looked back through the, the Legion's, Mr. Crawford's comments, as the Legion, people were asking about why the Legion wasn't open, and, and he issued a few statements in the past about feasibility and that sort of thing. And I certainly support an expanded patio if it means, you know, feasibility and, and making it so that the Legion can be open. Reading through everything that I could find, I, I found it's open Wednesday from three till seven, Friday from three till seven, and, and Saturday from three till seven, so twelve, twelve hours total. So I, I mean, little slight concern with, with that. From the way that I read it, from the, the letter, it's not included in the package, but it's on the Legion's website, that with the existing patio, they have the ability to service thirty patrons. Being down there pretty much every Friday and Saturday night over the summer, and since it's been, you know, somewhat open, there certainly has never been thirty people out there. Now, I'm not there on Wednesday night, so I can't speak for Wednesday nights, but, you know, I, I just question certainly the size of, of this. The other question that I had was in, in the letter that we received, it doesn't stay temporary. In, in the response or the recommendation, the recommendation comes back and says that it's temporary, but there's no date for what temporary means. So does temporary mean it comes down this fall? Does it stay up for all of next year, or does it go till two thousand and thirty? The, I have a concern about what the material of the fence is going to be made out of, the snow fence that's currently wrapping the patio there is certainly not very attractive. And with the work that's going into our waterfront and, and the amount of use that that pavilion is getting this year, wrapping a pav-, a, a snow fence that goes halfway behind that pavilion and reducing the use behind it a little bit, I have an issue with that as well. So, again, not being a horseshoe player, I wasn't quite sure what one pit meant. So in my eyes, it, it, I wasn't sure whether it came to the middle of the pavilion or whether it came to sort of the corner of the pavilion. I'd be far more in support of, you know, two or three pits. Seeing that the lights are really only going, going to be geared towards two pits, it makes a lot of sense to me to, to cut off the patio where the lights would, would be focused, too. So, you know, I think it's great that they can expand the patio and, and help them, you know, get more patrons there, but I, I don't, making it legal to have booze while you play horseshoes doesn't make a, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it doesn't matter how many times I look at this picture, or either picture, I only count eight horseshoe pits, not ten.
I think there are two more to the west, Mr. Mayor.
That don't show in the pictures.
That have been put in, uh, if this picture, if this picture is of, of an older area, at an older time, on older technology. There may be more pits in.
All right, so let's go back to the staff recommendation and see if we can find something else here. And, and I'm trying to find a way to help the Legion out here. Let me preface that remark by saying that we, we just got from the provincial government another hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred dollars to be used for COVID-related, and they're using, I'm, I'm going to ask the treasurer to speak a little bit more fully to the actual dimensions of that program, but it's for Co- COVID-related expenses. And one of the things that, that the provincial government and a number of other bodies are concerned about is the survival of our Legions. And they're looking for various different ways to help the Legions. And one of the things that's been suggested to me is that we should consider how we can help our Legions with perhaps some of this later money. In addition to that, I might say as well that I've had a communication from Enbridge Gas, and Enbridge Gas has quite a budget that they use to support various fundraising organizations throughout the regions where they are the franchise operator. And they do things like supporting sports events and supporting different kind of social interaction fundraising activities. So the communication that's come to me is that because of COVID nineteen, a lot of the events that they supported in past years, they're not going to be able to support this year. And they asked me for some recommendations as to how they might dispense this money in some other ways. And I, and I suggested to them that the Legions would be one way, and the Food Banks would be another way. So they're considering that, and so they're considering helping the Legions. So the question comes to me, how can we consider helping the Legion here? So if I go to the staff recommendation and just read it word for word, support and provide permission to the Cardinal Legion to temporarily extend the patio onto township property in order to accommodate COVID nineteen and lead schedule and health unit protocols for social distancing, subject to the Cardinal Legion providing the township with dimensions of the patio extension. So just reading that part, let's, let's see if we can't put a limit on it and say something like, providing the township with dimensions of the patio extension of no more than double this existing size. So then all we're agreeing to is that we extend it to double its size onto township property. And we end it there. And then request that the Cardinal Legion provide a certificate of insurance naming the township and their third-party liability insurance. So those two things, it doesn't seem to me are that hard to do in the absence of further information from the Legion. And I can't help but think that the president of the Legion who sent us this letter has somehow mixed up in, in, did, did he see this, this drawing? Does he know how big this area is? Did he see it?
Uh, through the chair, I was away Thursday, he was away Friday, I was talking with the president on Wednesday, and I got clarification this morning.
So he sees how big it is?
This morning, and he's the one that actually identified that area as the specific area and clarified with me that I was misinterpreting the number of pits.
Oh, my goodness. Well, we certainly don't, I, I quite agree with the CAO, and I quite agree with the deputy mayor, if there's, there's seldom thirty people on the patio, if you double it to size so that it'll accommodate sixty, it's certainly not the size of that green box.
Twenty-six on Friday, Mr. Mayor.
Twenty-six.
I was twenty-three.
You were at one time, but you're a long way from there now.
I think the mayor's getting somewhat mixed up here.
Anyway, I'd like to find a way to help them, that's what I'm, we do. And we've got, we've got time between now and council at the end of the month, I guess. But it'd be nice to be able to send them a signal.
I want to get Counselor Dillabon.
Yeah. I, 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 I want to support them a hundred and ten percent. I, I mean, this, this one here, no, I, I don't know, maybe Mr. Crawford confused. The one that he put in, the first one that's on my sheet, I would agree with a hundred percent. The first two horseshoe, well, one and a half horseshoe by the looks of it, but we'll say the first two, two horseshoes with our, our name listed as, as in chair, I'm more than happy to support that first one, but not this, not at all.
Just a clarification.
Yes, let's go ahead.
On the first map that we received, I, I just want to get something clear in my head. On the first map that we received, where the one oh five is right on the top of the building, there's a brown line that goes from the river's edge across the corner and down. Is that not all Legion-owned property?
To the chair, um, those are very, very, very rough outlines provided by GIS. Don't rely on those lines.
No, but they're, they're within ten feet.
I can't, can't always guarantee that either. They, they say it's within ten feet. We just use them as a guideline, as well as we mentioned before on the recommendation, staff put temporarily in it. I was able to clarify again just this morning that temporary, they're looking to have the extension up until the end of September.
Yeah, it could get cold, I mean, not to be up there on October for sure.
And in the new recommendation, I think that should be put in, that date should be, should be put in. Now, Deputy Mayor, you wanted to back in?
Uh, yeah, so that clarifies one of my points is that for me to support any recommendation, there would have to be a timeframe on what temporary means. And, and second, there's no mention in, in his letter, and maybe it's my ignorance, but were the Legions not given eighty-three million dollars through Ontario Trillion funding? And does that, can that apply to this, or is it just for other things?
Eighty-three billion?
It was August the sixth, twenty twenty, they were given eighty, but I don't, but I don't know if it can be used for this, or if it's, no, it's, it, I've already read, it's through, it's, I read it today, it's for Eastern Ontario, Eastern Ontario Legions qualify for it.
Auto application.
But I just want to make sure that it's not for just mental health issues or something like that, that it's actually for supporting ideas and things like this. But, but all you have to do is click Google search, there's eighty-three million, that's our, it was August the sixth.
Okay, I, I just have a couple of, couple of questions. It was, it was indicated that they want to put tables inside, and I'd like to know whether those would be township tables? And have they approached the township about using tables inside? Because if it's going to be fenced off, that means through the day, if they're township tables, they won't be able to be accessed by the people who use the park. So I'd like clarification on that. And I also, I would also support just a smaller, a smaller patio area. I would say the first two, two, the first two pits, and that, and that would be as, as big as I'd like to see it go, myself.
But why don't we deal with it in square footage?
And we can, well, I, I think that should.
Are they going to try to use those pits?
On Wednesday night?
Probably Wednesday.
Want to fence right through the middle of the pit?
Well, probably.
That's all square footage, if you want to make sure you pass the pit.
Well, I don't know how they do it now with this, with this large one, because they'd be fencing that area, leaving two or four pits open, so what, what would they do there? And it's also up to them to come back to us more information, it says so in the recommendation. So they, they can give a square footage or whatever. Yes?
I kind of tend to agree with the, our mayor's suggestion there. If the patio that they have there now, I assume they went to the health department, and they say it's accommodating thirty, that it's set up for social distancing and stuff with a thirty there now, that they got permission to set thirty, so why can't we just say, well, you say there's twenty-six there on Fri- Friday night, if we double that, that, if they, allow them to extend whatever square footage it needs to get to accommodate sixty people to meet the social distance.
But, but I think that the, the thirty that they accommodate on this existing patio is not, is not in compliance with the social distancing protocol. The tables, they're right distance apart.
In his letter, in, you know, the president's letter on, on, that they've posted on Facebook, it suggests that it is.
It does?
Yep.
Wow.
It's not included, I don't, hey, I don't, but it says in the letter that you can look it up yourself.
I can't see.
I, I, I'm just saying, allow them to expand whatever square, extra square footage it needs. If they're trying to do thirty there now, and we had twenty-six there, say, figure out your square footage, how much you need to expand to accommodate sixty to meet all the liquor control and, and health standards. There you go, you got to take whatever you need, you can just accommodate sixty.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, I'm going to just go back to the CAO regarding this recommendation. I, I guess my question would be, should we defer this until the Legion can get back with, with more information, more accurate information regarding the comments you heard here tonight? Or will we change, do you want, would you be comfortable to change the recommendation now and, and vote on it?
Through, through, through the chair, I, I would be comfortable if, if, if committee wants to, to amend the, the recommendation with respect to either square foot or, or number of people, and we will, we will work with the Legion to get that finalized and good, good to go for council.
Okay, thank you, so.
Good for you. I don't want to delay it.
Okay, so, as the recommendation reads now, they have to, they still have to get back to us with information, and we can, I don't, have, do they know what information they have to come back to us with? Staff, go ahead.
So can I suggest that we do it this way? After the word dimensions in the first clause, subject to the Cardinal Legion providing the township with dimensions which double existing seating capacity. So we're allowing them to double their seating capacity and provide us with the dimensions.
Okay. Staff comfortable with that?
This is a question.
That's outside seating.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, but it... So, we, we mentions that double their existing outdoor patio space.
Yeah, correct.
Is that, is, is that acceptable amendment?
I, 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 I think so. I hope somebody wrote that down.
That, that pins it down a little, a little. What was that, I'm sorry, what was that? That's all right.
Through, through, through the chair, I, I, I believe the clerk, you know, jogged that down.
So it was just further clarifying the mayor's statement to add after the word dimensions, which double existing outdoor seating capacity, rather than just leave it blank, for, further clarifying it.
Okay, Counselor, are you okay?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay. Can I have a mover, please? I have a mover with Counselor Hunter and a seconder with Counselor Dillabon. The question, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you, staff. Now we're going to move on to item seven K, and I believe this is a good news, there is a recommendation here, and I believe it's good news, and it's on page forty-four and forty-five of your package, and it's regarding surplus land. So Rebecca, could you highlight this, please?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. As most of the committee and council are aware, councils worked through this the past couple of months of declaring a land surplus and then setting a minimum tender price of fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars for the vacant parcel of land on South Street. Staff issued the required public notices for the tender in local newspapers advertised on the township's social media and website, June twenty-
on the township's social media and website, um, June twenty-third. At the closing date of August fifth, tenders were opened and we received two. There you are, list of low both Lockwood and Madison Mulder Enterprises. Uh, both came in great over bid, which is perfect in some cases. Um, so staff are recommending that municipal council award the sale of surplus land of the tendered property to Lockwood Brothers for fifty-five thousand plus any taxes that may be applicable and authorize staff to execute the necessary documents to complete that transaction.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Rebecca. Uh, questions? I'll start with Mr. Packwood. Councillor?
Well, I think, uh, one thing we help clear up an ancient problem would actually come out ahead in the game.
Deputy Mayor?
No, not at all.
Mister Mayor?
Please move the recommendation.
Thank you.
Oh, I'll second it.
Well, okay, any questions? Obviously not, you're, 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 you're that, you're that quick. And, and we do appreciate it. I'll call the question, all in favor. Done. It, it was a good news.
Well done, well done.
Okay, that brings us to a seven L, which is actually, uh, an information item. Uh, I don't think there's a recommendation with this. So it's regarding the, uh, T-seven engine replacement. Mister CIO, would you like to highlight this or would Mister Shaw?
Well, thank, thank you, Mister Chair. We, we, we had this discussion at, at the admitted finance on, on August tenth. Uh, there, there were some questions raised that, uh, staff went away and the director of operations has, has done that follow-up and, uh, I, I believe answered all those questions within table one. And, and ultimately, the, the recommendation remains the, the same as, as issued in the staff record on August tenth.
Um, Mister CIO, I thought, now I could be wrong. So I, I'm seeking clarification regarding that recommendation. I thought the recommendation was decided we were going to send the vehicle to ET. No, I'm sorry then, okay, I, I apologize for that misunderstanding. Okay, so then the recommendation on page forty-nine is that the vehicle will be repaired at Rush Truck Center for thirty-six thousand dollars plus non-reviable HST, including utilizing the fund from the Public Works Reserve Fund and the current balance is almost four hundred thousand dollars there. Okay, um, I'm gonna open this up for, for discussion and questions. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, just a, a comment and a question through the chair to Gord. You know, great comparing apples to apples for sure on, on this one, you know, it, it certainly takes away a, a lot of the questions. My only question would be, um, uh, when it came to the kilometerage for, for that warranty. Through Rush, there, um, is no mention of that on there, on the, the document. Can you provide a little more information on what the mileage, uh, for the two-year warranty would be or if there is a mileage restriction?
Through the chair, uh, to the deputy mayor. Basically, on the, uh, the sheet I followed up with the attachment, as replacement trimmed engine, carried twenty-four month parts and unlimited mileage nationwide limited warranty. So I think it's, um, it includes, um, there's no mileage in the two-year period, so.
No mileage restrictions at all?
No.
Mister Packwood?
I just have a question. On the original quote from Rush, it says engine remanufactured DT four sixty-six, two hundred and forty-five horsepower. If you add on the quote thing, it says an international DT two hundred and seventy horsepower.
Difference in horsepower.
Yeah, is it difference in engine level?
Through the chair, I'm, I'm not sure, through, after operations, do you?
I'm, I'm unsure. I, I think it's the same Max Force engine, um, in series, what, what they're using for their, uh, the original Max Force engine was redesigned after twenty-fourteen, my understanding, and it may, may have to do with that.
It does say though, the two seventy on our, on our Rush truck quote, it does say the Maxi Force, uh, two hundred and seventy horsepower on the unit number above, you'll see it, the engine Maxi Force, DT two seventy.
Yeah.
It's listed there. It is listed there.
Mister Packwood, are you happy with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, deputy mayor, you want to?
Just a follow-up, and I, I apologize for not bringing this to you before today when I asked the other questions, but is the warranty transferable?
No.
It's not.
Right there.
So it's all, it's all, yes, I didn't read that as part of it. Okay, thank you.
We're on our own.
Uh, Mister Mayor, any questions concerning this?
Time to close our eyes, hold our nose and put our hands up.
Mister, uh, councillor Dillawatt?
I can say something else if you can't save on camera.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to the, uh, the recommendation on, uh, on page forty-six. I believe that's where it is. Mister Chair?
It's easier to read, Mister.
Sorry, sorry. God will get you for that.
Got to have a bit of fun here, so thanks.
I know, I know. Okay, okay, so it's on, it's on page forty-nine, uh, and it's, uh, for, uh, for Rush and, and we've read it out. Do I, did I, I didn't get a mover or a seconder, did I? Could I have a mover? Councillor Dillawatt and the seconder with councillor Hunter, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
It's carried. There goes Truck Center. Okay.
Mister Chair, before we go on.
Yes, Mister Mayor, go ahead.
We should have asked this question before the, uh, before the vote, but I'll, if you, if you'll permit me, I'd like to, through the chair, ask a question to the treasurer, see if there's any way she can squeeze this into the other category.
Through the chair, what category does the mayor want me to squeeze it into?
It's a Coleman truck. Good drive, Mister Mayor, good drive.
We'll have to wait till the tests come out.
I think the tests were that high temperature and this truck had a high temperature.
Yes, it, yes, it did.
It's had more than a fourteen day warranty.
Okay, I'm moving on and, uh, we're at, uh, number eight of the agenda and it's councillor inquiries and notices of motion. I'll start with councillor Dillawatt.
I have a few, but I won't take long. I've been getting some complaints and I wonder if we can, uh, probably it's worth you can look into for next year of spring is Sutton Street, we're getting lots of speeders and they are, and we put signs up and so on. I'm hoping we can do maybe in twenty twenty-one budget is get a couple of speed bumps up there just for the spring till the fall, take them out for the snow town. I have one for, uh, deputy chair, the one, uh, with the ice rentals going the way they are in, in, in Cardinal, do you think our Spencer Arena is going to be open earlier or are we all right to let it get cooler in September, October regular?
Um, through the chair to councillor Dillawatt. Yeah, for me, it, it doesn't matter what the temperature, it's just it will be whether or not we have the, the demand. So I've spoken with a number of our major users and I have clarification back from them. I'm just waiting on self-come-over binder hockey, they have a Zoom executive meeting tomorrow night to determine, um, what ice they will be looking at. Um, I know all district teams have to submit their final requirements by the end of August. So within the next two weeks, two to three weeks, I'll have a, a better indication as to whether or not, um, we'll be opening. Right now, I'm quite confident that we will probably be open for potentially August the, or sorry, October the third, which is a Saturday. The contracts currently go right now through till the second of October. And, um, but based on the information I've got back from a lot of the, of the users, they're quite confident that they'll offer same allotment of ice that they've had in previous years. The only concern will be the Spencer Arena, as we obviously all know, is a lot smaller in dimensions as far as the change rooms go. And that's something that I will be reaching out to have a conversation with our local health unit on that. Because obviously thirty kids, fifteen, twenty kids are tight in one of those change rooms. So that's something that we'll have to address.
I have one more, Mister Chair, and I'll leave you alone. I had a great opportunity of going out to the Tillgate, uh, party on Saturday night here in Spencerville. We had barbecue, I was with my wife Brenda and granddaughter Emma, we had a great time. We set up my truck, full truck with candles, wine glasses. It was a real, real big turnout. Didn't stay for the dance, just for the dinner. And, uh, I just can't say enough with the Spencerville business community, the way they pull together, the way they, the fair board work together. Uh, I guess that's what makes this community so strong, so proud, well done.
The one thing councillor, I didn't see any wine.
Not, not ginger ale.
I saw more than ginger ale.
Anyways, it was a great time, thank you.
Mister Mayor, minute.
I felt really bad about that because I meant to come to that, but I didn't. I thought they were selling tickets and I didn't get any kind of an notice to buy a ticket.
They did sell tickets, I don't want to lose my chance, so, because I wasn't going to stay for the dance.
Um, okay, so, uh, I have a couple of things. So it, it, it wasn't decided that, um, that the dehumidifier repairs are just, uh, operating expense? Was that, is that where we're coming from with that? Twenty-five thousand, is it just, uh, operational costs? Because it wasn't in the briefing, no.
So, so through, uh, through, through the chair, um, right, right now, yes, the, 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 the key is to get that, uh, up functional, operational and, and, and we'll monitor, uh, revenue and expenses throughout the year. We, we may need to come back to, you know, if, um, if, if there, if, if there is an overage.
Okay, so right now it's an operational cost?
Right, right now it's within an operational cost.
Thank you very much. And so now, next question through the chair to the CIO. Uh, so about a month or so ago, uh, at the direction of council, I sent a letter to both Prescott and Augusta, it was addressed to mayor and council concerning our, uh, or outlining our costs for twenty nineteen operations, arena operations, and indicating to them that, uh, any contribution to twenty nineteen arena contributions would be appreciated. Uh, so through the chair to the CIO, has there been any response to that letter at all?
Uh, through, through, through the chair, uh, I did receive acknowledgement from, uh, from, from both CAOs that they were in receipt of it and, and distributed, uh, to, uh, their, their council. My understanding was that it was going to, uh, come up for discussion. Well, I, I, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, on August tenth, but I have, have not received, uh, any follow-up, uh, since.
So we don't actually know whether it was discussed on August the tenth?
Through the chair, a- a- as of now, no, I, I, I am not, I am not certain whether it was discussed on August tenth or not.
Thank you very much, Mister Chair, those are my questions.
Deputy Mayor, nothing? Councillor Hunter?
I have, uh, one inquiry, I guess it ba- basically goes to our mayor, our serving warden. I had a, a handful of, of very angry rate payers in our township over County Road, the treatment that they did in County Road forty-four, again, from Spencerville to Johnstown on there, especially after they had, uh, proceeded week before to just repaint the lanes on it and spray, spray it with, uh, with, uh, the same, basically the same treatment they did last year. All I did was coat cars and, and ice stop and looked out at the few places today and I, I really don't see what county's wasting their money on this firm and I don't see that it's really accomplishing anything that road's rougher than it ever was.
It does work, it fills holes.
For, so.
Fills holes.
Okay.
It does fill holes.
Well, it fills some, but raises others, things up, and run, and run.
It fills the holes.
It doesn't help.
It doesn't help the cars.
Doesn't help the road, uh, either as far as lasting. They spend enough on it, I'm sure, in these two treatments now. I just as well have been grinding and research.
Well, there you go.
So just in response, Mister Chairman, the cost differentials there are exponentially different. I wasn't aware that, uh, that that treatment was called for on County Road forty-four this year. I've been watching, actually on County Road twenty-two, where we're doing a complete rebuild from, uh, I believe it's Pitts, you know, Pittston to Shanley. And, uh, including cross curblers and, uh, the surface came up and I think we're putting down, we put down the first quote, which is the recycled material and then the hot mix comes later. So I, I wasn't paying any attention till highway, County Road forty-four, until I drove it a, a week or so ago. And actually, I was quite surprised, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to the director since then. Uh, however, I do know that it is part, that type of treatment is part of our plan to, uh, hold a road surface together for a few extra years until we can come up with the dollars to do the full treatment. The, the, the way they describe it is that a road will go to a certain point and then it, 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 if you don't deal something, it falls off quickly. But if you, if you treat it in just the right way, you can extend that life for a few more years. So that's what they're, that's the way they've been dealing with it. I mean, the present director of, uh, of operations or of, uh, Public Works has a certain philosophy and it's, it's taken him about two years to get that philosophy sort of working. And now he's leaving at the end of August and we'll have a new director of, uh, of Public Works hired sometime before Christmas. And I suppose there will be a completely different, uh, approach to how we maintain county roads. So I have no way of knowing how this will end up.
I don't agree with the treatment, it is a treatment I'm familiar with, or it does work. But it doesn't work when you let a road get as bad as County Road forty-four when they started doing it with by the point where that treatment was going to help. So when they, it's generally a treatment that they, they do roughly four, five years, maybe. Depending on the road, sometimes just four years after it's been resurfaced that they do this, that it's, but when you get the cracks and breaks as bad as forty-four, is there, not helping any. A little bit of fill, if the water and salt still gets down in it in winter, so, uh, break up, so.
Just to, uh, and, and just to, uh, comment on that, uh, to, to the warden, the lines are, in some areas, the lines are probably gone. That's a very unsafe road at night.
They're all gone now.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
So the point you were saying, you made, you said it was bad enough to tar it, but why did we waste money painting the lines and then we later covered them up?
Oh, that's just poor coordination, I mean, and, and just so you know, I mean, our, the, uh, the contract for line painting goes out really early. I mean, that's one of the contracts that we let probably in January or February. And, and so that contractor knows that he has our contract to do such and such and such a roads. What we don't know and what he sometimes doesn't tell us is when he's going to do it. And so then it becomes a question of coordination. He probably, if he had, if there had been some communication between the contractor that's doing the painting and the, and the Public Works Department, that they were going to do it on such and such a day, he might have, the Public Works Superintendent in charge of that, this area, Red Bull County, probably would have said, well, just hold off because we're going to do this and this treatment. We don't want you painting lines right now, but that didn't happen. And, you know, I mean, I, I can't make excuses for it because I find it hard to excuse. And, you know, I mean, I can't make excuses for it because I find it hard to excuse.
One other thing that they asked me to bring forward to you to take to counties is there's been an action, I assume on number two highway, just in near, near the park out there, that they had the guard rail and dent, which they had pylons on, took it out just a week ago. And also the one at the end of Crowder Road where they run off and took the guard rails pretty near, right out. Comment was, these guard rails are here for a safety thing. Why is it taking so long for them to get their contractor? Do they know the counties don't do themselves? It's a contract thing for repair of these. Why they haven't been notified to get the, these guard rails fixed?
Oh, they were notified. Actually, three spots on County Road two now. Three, three ends are gone.
One end was, last one was. When they hit, they bent it out towards it, it just barely inside the pavement.
Yep. The contractor gets notified and then, I don't, I, again, I don't understand how the, how that maintenance program works. I know the one closest to my house has been well over two months now, I think.
April twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth, is that when it was? So they, you know, when I asked the questions, I'm just told, well, the contractor has been told that it has to be fixed. Interesting thing was, the same type of guard rail was taken out on Highway four sixteen, just south of Spencible here, by a tandem tractor trailer, and he took out probably almost a hundred yards. And they were right there the next day to replace that whole hundred yards. And I thought to myself, well, they're already here in the area, it's the same contractor, I'm sure he'll come and do the tier fours, the two, there was only two spots then on County Road two, but they never showed up.
One of the comments that were made to me, but one of the guys, all the pit up there, he said, they seem to be able to get fourteen, sixteen fix in areas, what happened to everyone through right here?
Well, that's because there's a creep there too. That's a safety issue.
Yep.
Mr. Packwood?
You only got six more, so.
Okay, I have, I have a couple. I've been contacted by, by some taxpayers regarding Legion Way, especially on the weekends, the amount of vehicular traffic going down to the dive site. They're going at a fairly fast rate of speed and there's a lot of walkers down there and they're, they're fearing for their, for their safety with, with these cars going at, going at high knots and no one has a license number, no one has anything other than, they're going very, very fast. Could, and I'm not sure whose department, whether this would be Public Works or whether it would be yours, Mike, in Recreation, but could we please have someone look at the situation, maybe putting some speed signs down there, like twenty kilometers an hour max, or something along those lines, so at least we have, we have some signage down there to, to caution the motors to, to, just keep it a little slower. Now, my next, my next question is for, is for Mike, and that is, I've been asked to look into the situation where I see we have, through the weekend, we have people working. How, how, how is, how is this, how is this going? Is this people coming in and doing overtime or is this people coming in on a regular shift to work on the weekends? I don't know if it was done in the last year or in the past, but there's a presence now and people are asking me about it. Could I, could I just get a comment on that?
So on our July first weekend, I did have, paid staff come in on the Saturday, or late Saturday night to do a garbage run and August long weekend as well. I had some, I had staff come in on the Saturday, or sorry, Saturday night to clean up the garbage because the downtown, the Legion Way area is being utilized quite a bit, so. But starting this past weekend, I'm not sure what you're making reference to, but I have an overlap now with the arena staff working on Saturdays and Sundays. I have a three-hour overlap on Saturdays and Sundays, so now that individual goes in and does a garbage run on Saturdays and Sundays at our parks.
Thank you. That, that, that is sufficient because it was this weekend that was referred to, as well as previous weekends, which I think you've explained. So, so thank you. So, so from here, pretty much here on in, it will be, just as you explained.
That is correct.
The arena staff will be doing overlaps.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I have. So with that, that brings us to item nine, which is the mayor's report.
So I have a few things to report that may be of interest. So today was the first day of the AMO Conference, which is a virtual conference this year. Because of the instability of the internet at my house, I go to the county council chambers because it's a little bit more stable. And so it was actually a full day today, starting at eight fifteen with the, the opening speeches. The premier spoke this morning. And I'm not gonna go into all the details of the program today, but a highlight is we had our meeting today, the C A O and I, with Minister Sarkaria, who is the minister responsible for the Job Site Challenge Program. And we had an opportunity to talk to him about that program. And so he tells us that the application's closed on July the thirty-first. They have about twenty submissions. They have just about finished the process of hiring an international site selector who will help them judge the various submissions and, and rank order them. Their hope is that they will select two to three sites in the next three to four months and that before the end of the year, they will have identified the three sites that are most promising and they will begin the international marketing campaign. So spoke to him at length about the extra work that we've done on our site or on the, on the Cedar Grove Road site since the submission. I indicated to him that, you know, that we've accumulated a lot of additional information that wasn't in our original submission. He's encouraged us to submit that or to, or to hold it and use it when his staff comes back to us, to ask for additional questions. I think the strategy that the C A O and I have devised with Novatek is that we would prefer to keep some of the information that we've garnered just to ourselves for the present time, to see what kind of questions the staff raises. Now, part of the reason that we wanna do that is because we've now opened discussions in the Minister of Municipal Affairs Office with the person that's in charge of the program called ministerial zoning orders. And ministerial zoning orders are very effective and very efficient orders that can save one to two years of the various studies that have, that the province requires in some cases to bring them to investment-ready status. In my opinion, we have, we have two great possibilities for ministerial zoning orders, which will bring two very important sites in our township up to investment-ready status. The first of which is the Ontario Job Site Challenge Lands, the second of which I will speak to when we're in camera on August the twenty-fourth. I'm hoping everybody has saved August the twenty-fourth in their calendars, that everybody will be here. Now, there will be two meetings tomorrow that deal with, or we'll have an opportunity to ask questions about the natural gas extension and expansion program. And the first is a roundtable with the Minister, the Associate Minister of Energy, and we've planted two questions to be dealt with at that roundtable. And the other is a, is a meeting in a minister's forum where the ministers that are in the forum and the minister himself, the Honorable Greg Richter, will be at that forum and we've planted two questions at that forum. So those questions deal with our application for the natural gas extension program as it pertains to County Road two and the Spencible Extension. So we'll have a little bit better idea of where those, what the process is to get to those decisions at the end of tomorrow's sessions. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That moves us to item number ten, which is question period. And we have, is Virchell is here? Do we have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. There's no closed session tonight, so the next thing on the agenda is for adjournment. Do I have a mover? Mr. Packwood and a seconder?
Aye.
To the Councilor Dilva, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.